I think he's touched on this, why we want to establish or make amendments to the existing signed ordinance. There is a signed ordinance in place, but as you can see from the pictures that Jennifer provided and the pictures that you have in front of you are some that I took back in May and June of this year. So you see, it's a continual problem. Some of the signs aren't the same, but it's the same problem that's reoccurring. So just some basics, there's not a lot of change with the basics of how the signed ordinance is going to operate as far as the application process. Currently, an application is obtained through the permitting department. The reasons that you would obtain a sign permit is for anything, whether it's to erect a sign, to rebuild a sign, to maintain a sign, alter it in any way, you would need to obtain a sign permit application for that. One of the things that we've outlined in this new amendment is changes, any changes that are going to occur to the sign, we need to see those, we need to have that on file so that it can be approved by the city so that it could be accepted or denied with the changes. The fees are not going to change as far as they are currently within the ordinance. I think they're set at 25% of the permit valuation plus the actual cost. The ordinance does outline that to allow for the fee schedule to amend that, so the ordinance doesn't have to be changed as long as city council adopts and amends the fee schedule. It does require a registered contractor to install the sign or to make changes or modifications to the sign. There is an inspection required. All of that is consistent with what the signed ordinance already calls for. There is a time limit for the completion, which is 90 days. So I just want to go into a little bit about the different types of signs. One of the things that I recognized when I was going through the signed ordinance is that the existing signed ordinance did, does call out different types of signs, but it doesn't categorize them and it isn't very specific with the wide range of types of signs that you see. As you can see from the pictures and like Jennifer showed you before, a sign can be defined in so many different ways, and if you aren't specific with that, then it leaves it up for interpretation, and that's where you have issues with signs that you don't feel like comply but can't necessarily remove. So what we did in the amendment to the ordinance was to call those out and be very specific with the types of signs that will be allowed and the types of signs that would be prohibited. So this is just a very quick overview of the different types of signs. We have wall signs, freestanding signs, which, let me go back. Wall signs is pretty self-explanatory. It's going to be anything that's going to be attached to a wall, whether it's basically this outside of the building. If you have an awning, you can have the awning sign that's attached to the awning, so forth and so on. There's different types of wall signs. You have your channel letter sign, you have a sign cabinet that has a sign inside of it, you may have a projecting sign that comes out a certain amount of distance from the wall, but those are all attached to the wall in some form or fashion. Then you have freestanding signs.
They're not painted on the wall.
Those are murals. Uh huh. Yeah. And we do have those included. And then you have freestanding signs, which is going to be anything that's not attached to the building. So what we found is that you have to be very specific with freestanding signs because they can range. These are the most signs that you see with the most variation. We have, the most common are monument signs and pole signs or pylon signs. And those, we tend to see that need to have the strictest regulations in order to adhere to what you need them to adhere to. As an example, I don't know if you can see the pictures, Jennifer had several really good pictures where you have just a metal frame and you have a sign in the middle of it and people are using that as a monument sign. And I've seen that several places all over the city. And it doesn't necessarily provide the architectural detail that you're going to want to have, especially if you have new development coming in and you want to, or you have multiple businesses, a location, and you have multiple monument signs, you want to narrow that down. And so the way, and we'll get into this further, but these are the reasons that you need to be more specific about the types and the regulations of freestanding signs that you allow. Another type of sign is a changeable message sign. Those are very common, especially on poles or pylons, restricted signs, parking signs. And one of the things that we really need to look at is the development sign plan, and that is when you have multiple businesses within one particular shopping center or you have multiple businesses within just one building. Because one of the things that I ran across when I was looking at them, and I'm sure Jennifer did too, is that you'll have one building that has five businesses in it and each business has two or three signs for that business. And so then you have a building that is just completely overrun with signs, and I don't think that that's the aesthetic look that the city would like to have. So having a development sign plan in place is what will allow you to regulate those signs that are allowed on a building. The amount of space that's taken up for a sign, the amount that's allowed per business, and so forth and so on. We'll get into that a little further. Temporary signs, I mean, you're going to have them, so you're, construction signs as things are developed, you have banner signs for events, human signs, we've all seen those all over the place, but they do need to have restrictions. Movable portable signs, those, I feel like they're a problem in lots of places, not just in Van Alstine, but everywhere. You have those signs that can hook up to a vehicle and you move them around, and that gets to be an issue if you don't have stricter regulations on those. Also residential subdivision signs, those definitely need to have restrictions in place or else you'll have, you have a builder come, or you have a developer come in and develop a subdivision, and then you have five different builder signs, and so you're pretty much overrun with the signs into the development. So part of the temporary signs are, one of the things that makes this run a little smoother as we've seen in other cities is that there's going to be certain type of signs that are going to be reoccurring that it helps to have the regulations in place, but they don't necessarily require a permit application because of the volume of them, you know, we tend to overrun the permitting department if someone's coming in every time they want to, you know, put up a garage sale sign or put up a yard athletic registration sign or whatever it may be. So these are, we do have regulations in place in the amended ordinance for these, but we are listing them as no permit required. Prohibited signs, it's a pretty extensive list, but I believe you can see the reasons that it would need to be. I personally have never seen an audible sign, but apparently they do exist, and there's some that...
Howdy cowboy, isn't downtown Las Vegas?
So, I mean, I think most of these are pretty self-explanatory. Temporary nuisance signs are definitely on there. Those are going to be any of the signs that, you know, you see sticking in the right of way usually. Vacant building signs, balloons and other floating devices, abandoned signs, so forth and so on.
Are we saying, can I ask you a question real quick?
Uh huh.
So like your prodding signs and probably feather flags would view the same thing. People are having sales or events, that's what they use are those feather signs and the balloons. You're saying they're never allowed to do that now?
Well, the way that, like, the way that we have this written, yes. These are just suggestions for y'all to approve or not approve, the direction that you want to go with the typical signs. In other cities, I did look at other cities that are along major highways like 121, George Bush, 35 down on the south side of DFW, and see what seems to be working with sign ordinances that are already in place. And so I took these, I told Lane when I was talking through this with him, that this is, and especially when you look through the regulations that are in the ordinance, these are just going to be suggestions that have worked. Now, it's up to council to decide the regulations that you actually want to put in place for Van Alstine. So I have seen where, you know, prohibiting feather flags could be beneficial, but if Van Alstine wants to incorporate those, we can, we can put regulations in place for those.
Am I thinking of the red thing for a feather?
Yes.
Is the red thing?
Yes.
Or the diagonal thing?
Yes. So... I think if you, if you look in those pictures that are included with there, one of the places that I pulled up to when I was here this summer, they had like five of those feather flags lining the front of their business and...
Yeah, we probably have 20 of them out there that I saw today.
Should be a temporary sign.
Yeah, they're mainly temporary signs, but you, and by temporary, they say now open sale or whatever, they leave them out there until they rot and fall apart. Yeah, so it's temporary to an extent that they don't want to place them.
They've become almost permanent though, if we don't have some control.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, it has to be regulated.
You could have some, you know, language around it being like, you have a grand opening or something like that, things like that. But I have a question on the no permit required signs. Why would, oh, two questions. One is, would location, is there going to be some language around like location signs? So like when you have temporary religious signs, like you can't just go put that in like Van Alstine's park, right?
Correct.
Like without having some sort of, some sort of authorization to be able to do that.
Correct. So in the regulations, we specify whether, where the locations are allowed and whether it needs to be an on-premise sign, if there's a possibility of it being an off-premise sign, we can be very specific about those regulations.
And why would apartment signs not need a permit?
Those, the way that those are written in here, or apartment signs that would say, they would be required to be on-premise signs, and they would be like, if they have like a weekend sale, like one bedroom sale this weekend that they put out for two or three days at a time.
That's not a permanent sign that says...
That's a temporary, now leasing.
Brook whatever apartments.
They literally live forever.
Yeah. I've seen them where...
Yeah.
These are...
Where they, where they put them out on the weekend, like on a Friday afternoon, and it's no, you know, one bedroom on sale, 300 off, and then they pull it up Monday before a certain time.
So is Exhibit A in our packets that's the, what you guys redrafted on the signed ordinance and the highlight, the highlight of those things that you guys made changes in there?
It's not the end all.
No.
I mean, with, with feather signs, with garage sale signs, I've lived in different communities that have different rules, and one that always worked well is if you're going to put up a temporary sign, you had to come into the city and fill out a form. There wasn't a fee associated with it. If it was a garage sale, the city actually issued you the garage sale sign, the standard sign, and you had to say when it's going up and when it's coming down. Satan's true for feather signs. It's going up on Friday, it can only be up for X number of days, then it's got to come down. If it's not down, somebody drives around, picks them up, and that's the end of it. I'm sorry?
Cause they're just old hostages, they have...
There's definitely issues on the front end roads, 75.
The nuisance signs.
Yeah.
And that Soli sign, I mean, that's been up there forever, and Soli doesn't exist over there, so that's...
Well, we now have the smoky barbecue sign still standing, but smoky barbecue is gone.
In poor dress?
Yeah, it's gone.
What do you do with that?
Yeah. That front end road is cleaned up a great deal. You know, the fruit stand's gone, and a lot of the signs that were there have been removed.
Okay, sorry.
Anyway, I think, I guess what I'd look for is direction. I think garage sale signs are a problem. They get staples of poles, they get all kinds of things.
Well, I mean, that would be if it was on a, on a city property, it's like that should be required for you to be able to give permission to the city to be able to put it there. If you just put it out on the street corner, you know, I mean...
Well, they get put out and they stay.
And they don't take a mandate to their property. And if somebody paints it, it has to be somewhere around the house, and it's a waste of, I don't know how you fix that.
Well, I said, the city, the one city I was in did a good job. You couldn't put up your own garage sale sign, but you know, the city just printed a bunch of them, a few hundred of them, and you would come in and fill out your form, and you'd be told, all right, it closes up Friday, it comes down Sunday, and here's your signs.
And I just, the apartment signs, that's what we put in here, and I think that's in a couple of other places, but it says Friday at 12:00 and you have to take it down by Sunday at 6:00, I think is what that was.
So if we go through this workshop and land on kind of how we want this ordinance to look, for the existing signs out there that don't meet the code, is that once it's adopted, the ordinance, we go to those businesses and say, you have to do that?
Uh huh. If the, if the signs were not legally conforming at the time of adoption of this, then they're not legally conforming now. So only the legally conforming signs in existence at the adoption of this ordinance would be able to remain.
Now, you have an option, you can grandfather, you know, and they would just apply to new.
I would have no...
Oh, well, I'm giving you those options, you know, that's an option that's there. You can give them a period of time to become compliant, six months, or 90 days, six months or a year, to become compliant. That gives people ample time to do it. Or if a sign is in true violation, and we have a number of signs in this city that people have installed themselves, they're on four by four posts, between four by four posts, that are literally two feet off the roadway.
Right. So that was, actually, that was my first question. I was talking about grandfathering signs because we have, my first one comes to mind is the little city drug sign hanging around outside, that one has been hanging up there for years and years and years. The Dr. Pepper mural sits on the side of the wall, whereas we have brand new murals, you know, two doors down.
Is the city drug business still in operation?
Yeah, it's just a sign that's not very clean, I think it's old and it's...
Well, we do have regulations in here regarding the maintenance and upkeep, and that's one of the things that we can look at when we're looking at whether or not they're lawfully in existence. And also, the Dr., I mean, the murals, that was one of the things that I did want to discuss during the workshop, is the way that we outlined what's allowed as a mural. It's going to have to pertain to the business, or you want it to specific, you know, be anything historical or a Dr. Pepper sign. I mean, that's one of the things that we'll need to look at and talk about, what you're going to allow on a mural, and then whether or not that would be allowed to stay.
And I think the Dr. Pepper sign is historical, right? It's been there for a long time?
Yeah, that, that's forever. I mean, it's, it's been there a while, although the feet, the feet signs on the side of the feet, it's, uh, reached over there.
I don't know, I always have the problem of pushing on the business owner's property of what they can paint on it or do on it, but we don't want something, I don't want to make money putting some offensive either, but...
We can require...
I hate controlling that.
Yeah. We can require maintenance of those, but, I mean, you've got a couple of murals that have been...
Uh huh.
Just, I think, some, we can require that.
So in this section that we have amended, it does say, and it goes into further detail, but it does say that all signs including but not limited to non-conforming signs shall be maintained to consistently have a need appearance. I mean, that's a pretty broad restriction, I mean, if the sign is dilapidated and, I mean, I don't know which sign y'all are referring to. I've seen the Dr. Pepper sign, but I don't know the city drug sign, so, but that's definitely something to consider, is the depth of the maintenance requirement.
Does that sign considered to be as a credit in our...
Historical.
No, I mean, the way, the way it hangs there on the wall, right?
Is it a, is it an awning? Is it coming from the awning or from the wall?
Is it a placard kind of?
Oh, it should head...
It goes to what?
Well, it hangs up on, whatever.
It hangs out from the wall, but there's a specific term for that.
There is.
It's a projecting sign?
This one here?
Yeah.
There you go. And I felt, because I saw that there was a chunk of written about that too.
And you, yeah, you can head for the historical district.
Yeah, you can take two different...
Yeah. Go back to, if we do refer to the...
I don't think people want to get rid of it, yes, but the maintenance and upkeep of it.
First slide.
Make sure it's repaired, so nothing gets destroyed.
Yeah. I don't know what that... That, I would move on.
Go on.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, he's got one, so that one should be gone.
Like for me, like the, we now have ethanol-free gas, that sign, and like all little itty-bitty signs that are all right there. I mean, those, and then everything that's in that Ameritech business with the 30 other signs, that's not even there, I don't think anymore, but every other sign that's there, you know, hail damage and all that stuff, like those signs, in the way to grid wouldn't conform, right?
Correct. Are those, those aren't, is that, we now have ethanol-free gas, is that a permitted sign? It's not a permitted sign.
It's been there for a long time, so it's permitted?
No, permitted, like if there was a permit issued for it.
Oh, I don't know that.
So, no, that would not be a conforming sign.
The real struggle here is that's a gateway into our city. We really have one currently.
Between.
That's it, and it's got...
And the first, when I was here this summer and I drove in, I really recognized the problem when I pulled up to this intersection, and it wasn't until I got out and parked that I realized that City of Van Alstine sign was there, because of all of the other signs in front of us.
Today, the ethanol sign that the gas station has, about half of the banners pulled away so it's wrapped around those poles, and, you know, the nuisance signs are blocking the view to our signs, so it's almost like we had to have an ordinance that says you can't, can't do anything around that monument sign. It has to do with future monuments, we don't want them plastered, I mean, we're going to put monuments where the majority of the people who come to Van Alstine can see it, and it's that what we want them to see.
And normally, gas stations will have a sign that they can put removable letters or, you know, letters underneath that just says, we have free, or whatever it is, so...
Well, it opens up a can of worms. I think, my opinion only, I think we ought to look at where the biggest issues are in Van Alstine, not try and fix everything in one pass. I think nuisance signs, we need to take a position on, whatever that is, and make those changes. And then what do we want to do with banners? We have banners all over the city.
Temporary, do you have a best comment?
Well, banners aren't intended to be permanent signage, and yet we have them as permanent signage in the city. We have people mounting them on wood and then screwing that to the wall, and that's their sign. It's a banner.
Which one are you talking about, though? Do you have one of mine?
I'd be hard pressed to just spout out one now, but there are a number of them.
The last one's slide.
I know that one of the, I think a restaurant I saw, a banner sign, yeah, that I'm hiring, and you took that yesterday?
Well, that's, that's been up almost ever since I've been here.
Yeah, so I saw that back in May. I will see, I will say that I saw one when I was here that was, I believe on the Allstate building, I think it was a banner that was attached to the wall.
Well, if you go forward to, it's not in our city, that's the, the newest tire shop that just opened up?
There was also a flag.
The leggings, or the banner?
I'm not sure.
There's one right there. Is that a banner?
Yeah, a banner on the wall.
That's advertising something, that's not, there's an event listed there, isn't there?
Oh, yeah, the Santa Experience.
That's the dance shop, or the dance corner over there.
Yeah, it's got dates on it, there, that's an event, and it's...
Keep going.
Some people have to think of it.
Oh, that's one.
This one?
Right there.
Back up one more, the one, right there, that's...
Yeah, banners all over this place.
Yeah, that's become their signage, they're not signing their facility, they're buying banners.
Well, so that one you used for R.A.
This one?
Yeah, so like all of those particular signs, those are the ones we see the most, whether it's, you know, metal two posts or wood two posts, you know, whatever it is, those are the ones to me that are, you know, sticking out a bit, that are...
I don't think those are a issue. I think our banded signs all over the place are the issues. Those were cleaned up, I think everything would look as bad. We do need to regulate things like that, but I think what's the eyesore for all of us when we can't see past it is all these little banded signs there everywhere, even on my little street.
This one?
The little, the size of like real estate signs, but they're little cardboard banded signs, like this company, like they're the auto company, they have them all over the place.
This, this, this guy's brand new.
I'm so big at that age.
This guy's brand new.
Yeah.
He's plastered his building with vinyl banners, that's his signage, and I've seen a lot of tire shops do this, but if you back up a slide now, the other way, keep going, that blue sign in the middle, that's within the city limits that directs you to his building, so he's driving nails into our telephone post and...
And the only way you're going to stop it is to get those phone numbers.
Well, the end there.
Show up and say, here's your...
Well, again, a gentleman. There you go, here's your sign.
Yeah. Or get one of the...
Well, it's not going to come down in as good a shape as it is right now, because it's one of those poly signs.
Are y'all willing to publicly interject at this point, or y'all just...
Oh, yes.
I have a question.
I would, I would like you to lift your article for the Division of Law and Order. If you're electronic, it's page 52, or our page, as we're all familiar with. Several, including walls, awnings, are calling for 30% coverage. And so if you've got a 12, a standard 12-foot-high wall, and 60-foot-long wall there, that's going to be a huge, ugly sign, and a lot of the, well, I'm going to back up, I look, McKinney did what y'all were doing in 2012, and they drew theirs off of Plano and Allen. And so I looked very closely at, and so they're pretty uniform between coming up and 75. They have, if your wall's this size, then you can't be bigger than this, if your wall's this size, you can't be bigger than this, but 30% of the area of the wall that has a sign on it, to me, is proportionally, that's, that's huge, because in my opinion, it should be about 10%. And the other issue in this area that I have is it doesn't say attachment length to that business. And so if I have a wall in downtown that is 25 foot by 150 foot, I can sell, I can make my money by just selling advertising to everybody that wants, I'll sell you a 10-foot by 20-foot strip for this, and I'll sell you, and end up with arrows in the place and... And end up with arrows in the place and, you know, your signs that y'all are complaining about are just going to be put on the walls. Can you imagine that on seventy-five? You know, I built a big building out there, and all of a sudden, I just make one wall, just pure sign. A third of it. So that, that is the area of this. And, and I think y'all will be just going through this in each section, and we'll discuss each section, y'all might like work progress. That's my input on those.
So, if I could address those two, those are very good points. So, the thought process behind the maximum thirty percent is if you have multiple businesses within their, uh, the building, then the maximum amount allowable would be thirty percent for the total amount of signs that are allowed on that building. So, we may want to include, in addition to that, the maximum allowable signage space is thirty percent or whatever percentage all decide upon. Um, or, you know, ten percent for one sign, twenty percent for, you know, however you want to break that down. Uh, but the reason to put the maximum amount in here is to consider a building that has multiple businesses within it.
Like downtown, it'll be a little bit different, but like, in a lot of places, the pylon signs with, that have... Does everybody know what a pylon sign is? Okay, pylon sign is like an Exxon where the gas price is, and they have the businesses listed down.
Oh, I know, I know.
That, that's, it, it, it has columns, and you guess how it has columns? Okay? But that's a real good way of listing your businesses. And it covers some of that in here, but...
So, when we're, like, when we're looking in this top-right picture, uh, so there's two businesses being advertised there. Y'all will just need to decide the maximum allowable signage space. Uh, if you're going to have, if you're going to allow a wall sign for each business that's in the building, then you're just going to have to determine what you want that maximum amount to be.
And that...
Not, not just, so like, let's say there's five of them. If you just allow ten percent for that one business, well, then you're looking at fifty percent of the building being signed still. So, we've got to take both of those things into consideration. How much you're going to allow for that business, and then how much you're going to allow for that entire facade?
Makes sense.
What were you going to say?
Well, like, on that, I would assume that the inset wall would count within that percentage. That it's all front.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, I would say they're probably, on that wall right there, they're probably taking up I wouldn't guess more than fifteen percent with the signage that's there.
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say the inside, just because it's exterior is part of it, because that's, you get into the tenant finish out? So, if they were to put storefront in there and make that part of the building, that has that, it has that opportunity. I wouldn't say you're allowed to inset just to get more, to get more signage space. Can we, can we finish up with the President? I know we didn't get all this.
Give me one.
The one, the one... Oh, this is yours. I'm sorry. The remainder of my presentation was talking about what, and we pretty much covered it. It's what we do to get rid of the issues. The way that it's written into, uh, the amended ordinance is once, um, you've determined, the city's determined that the sign is noncompliant, or it's a nuisance sign, or it's a prohibited sign, to notification of owner of the property, there's, it's, the way it's written in is, uh, like, let's say we have an abandoned sign and the business is no longer there. Well, then the owner becomes responsible for that sign. So, the owner of the property, the owner of the premise, or the tenant, or individual business that is benefiting from the sign being in place. Those are the people that the city can contact to be responsible for the removal of the sign. They'll have ten days to remove the sign, and if they don't remove the sign, citations can be issued, and, uh, the sign can be removed. With the exception of the temporary nuisance signs. We did write it in there that temporary nuisance signs, the little ones that are stuck in the right-of-way, or the big ones that are stuck in the right-of-way, can just be removed immediately. And people will have to come, um, pick them up from wherever the city stores them. So, and I think we wrote it in here for, only holding on for seven days. So, because we, we also don't want to have to, you know, have a large space to store lots of signs, so, um... But that's how, it's currently written in to allow for handling the signs that aren't in compliance. Um, this is, you know, we just went over this, help for seven days. Uh, maintenance, uh, this is what I touched on a little bit earlier. They will, property owners, business owners, will be required to maintain the signs. Uh, that's one thing that I did see a lot of, I don't think we really talked about it too much tonight, is there were a lot of signs that were in need of repair. They may very well be legally existing signs, but they need to, uh, they need to be repaired. And to, um... So, in order to do that, they're going to need to be permitted, and the repairs are going to need to take place. There's, and then there's regulations in place for the city to handle that if they don't comply. Uh, nonconforming signs, it's basically the same thing where, um... Um, how, like, if a, if a nonconforming sign, we talked about it, if it's legally existing, uh, lawfully existing, then, uh, it can remain in place until it's required to have changes made, uh, and then it would need to be, become conforming. Or if it is damaged, and this was already existing, it's already damaged, and then the, um, the repair cost exceeds a certain amount, then they're required to make it compliant as well. And that was all we had on that, so...
Do we have something with a breakdown of our permit fees on that? Like, with us tonight, or do we just need to go with the...
The fee schedule? I did not think that.
We don't have any, but sure we'll get tonight.
So, one of the things on there, one question I've got, is billboards. It said, "Billboards are prohibited."
Yes.
Any new billboards?
Any new billboards?
That's correct.
They were already prohibited in the existing ordinance, so...
So, if somebody... What's the guy that was on the table? Where's the guy that was on the table?
Clint Murphy.
Clint, yeah. So, if you want, if you want, we don't have it. Because I know a billboard is not considered a sign, it's considered a structure, is it not? Because it has to have power, lights, everything else, and it has to have a building permit, usually.
Well, it doesn't have to. Technically, I mean, they can be considered a structure, but technically, a billboard would be considered a sign. Even with the electric portion of it.
Just usually, a billboard, I mean, the type that are out there, that we see on the highway with the, with the... They're bolted and everything else, those usually are engineered. So, there's usually a, there's usually piers and a footing, a meter, and everything else. It's not run off, it has an individual electrical service to it. It, it's more considered a structure than just a sign. Now, we do have, there are billboards like, uh, what's her name, Spraw Works, and she goes out there and puts, you know, two four, you know, two four-by-eight sheets and makes an eight-by-eight wood sign that's sticking up on the side of the road, it would be considered a billboard. And she puts better power lights on and things of that nature. So, I was just wondering about, do we have zoning for structures such as industrial cat turner-type billboards? Or are you considering that still signage?
If, if its only purpose is to advertise the... I mean, maybe well, but if its only purpose is to advertise the sign?
It's, as far as the...
I think the only regulation we have is in our sign ordinance. There's no mention of structure or billboards in any of our zoning that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And if there is one existing, and it does require maintenance, or it's damaged, and it has to come down, it cannot be re-permitted to go back up or to be repaired. So, the property owner, the business owner, would have to remove it at that time.
Right, so we've got billboards out there. I mean, David Rivers got his text online and everything else, so...
Those are owned by Lamar and there's several large corporations that have billboards over there.
But plus you have fifty percent, I believe, that it's still...
So, if those were not in our city, I don't think that...
Doesn't break that.
There's no, I mean, they change out those billboards and all the time, every, every permit.
That's what I was thinking.
Even ones that are right at the corner, that are in the city. I mean, I don't think they need to do it, but...
I don't know, our CDC, EDC, everybody's got our, our stuff's out there, too, on those billboards.
No, I know we do.
And that's how we're getting people to come to our town, by billboards further down seventy-five. So, I don't think we want to cut off the hand to feed this right there, that's not smart.
But you've got extra number of billboards already up, and those get, those stuck.
Right, but if they get damaged or got to be repaired, then we're saying they can't come back.
Well, that's already existing, in the existing ordinance. So, it's already written that way.
Is that something they could come and ask for a variance and, you know, to re-vary it, or is that?
I don't...
Or it's just enough?
I don't believe so. I mean, I have the old...
Yes, you could ask for a variance. You can ask for a variance. To anything you would like to ask, it's up to the council, of course. I would be inclined to go with Marlo's thought, that we have, I think, five within our city right now, and perhaps we say that's the maximum amount we're going to permit. And if one comes down, they can't replace it unless they come in here and present to council what, what that's going to be. Because what you're going to end up with is electronic billboards. You won't get a standard billboard anymore.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. You're going to get a monstrous TV screen out there.
So, the way that the ordinance is currently written, commercial billboards are strictly prohibited. And the only way that, and that's just how this ordinance is written now, the only way that that variance technically could be approved is if they're able to determine that there's an unnecessary hardship that requires the billboard to be repaired or altered. So, we can definitely change those regulations. And we can, we can go, even go as specific as saying, these, I think y'all said, five billboards can be maintained, and here are the, here are what they're allowed to do with those five billboards. We can, we can set those regulations. The only thing we can't do is tell them what they can actually put on the billboard. We can't regulate that, but we can say, you know, you can change the face, you can maintain as needed, but you just can't erect any new ones, and these are the only five that can do that.
Right, so...
That's on Highway Eight, too.
Um...
Y'all go ahead, y'all have a good discussion.
All, all I was going to say is the billboards aren't the problem. It's these nuisance signs that are the problem. That's what we should be focused on, I believe. Uh, the signs with most of the businesses are okay. Just like Marlo said, we don't need to be, you know, uh, hindering the, or hindering is not the right word, but, uh, you know, forcing them to change signs that have been there for, you know, twenty, thirty years that are well maintained, even though they may not be compliant with the, you know, code, or the ordinance as it's written, those should be left alone until they become a problem. Okay? I don't know how we're going to write that in there, but, you know, the things that aren't a problem, we don't need to be addressing. It's the things that are the problem that we need to do something about. Clean up the city where it looks like. Uh, so...
So, are you talking about just the billboards now, or?
No, I'm not talking about billboards at all. I'm talking about all these little things, you know, the
Slide one.
The banners that are supposed to be temporary that end up being permanent. You know, the, the Smokey Juice, for example, is out of business, that thing doesn't need to be there. Uh, the garage sale signs that stay up there for two weeks after the garage sale is over. You know, that kind of thing. That shouldn't be the city's burden. That should be the people that put up the signs' burden. So, we should be focusing on whether or not to, you know, assess a fine to it, or, you know, making them sign, you know, they can, they can get a permit without having to pay for a permit. But when they do, they're signing the agreement that says, okay, we're going to put the sign up, we're responsible for picking it up. If we're not, we acknowledge that we're going to pay a fine. You know, something to that effect. And that, I think that would help clean up some of the, some of the problems we've got. Same way with the temporary signs that, that we're putting up there. You know, those little signs that are put right there in front of that monument sign take away from the aesthetic beauty of the monument sign itself. I mean, it looks, it looks tacky. And, but if it's there, you know, for a couple of days before an event, okay, that's fine, we'll allow that. But once the event's over, get it out of the way so that we can see the police sign and stuff.
As, oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead. No, I'm...
I I agree with most of that. The part I disagree with is that we don't need to be worried about anything that's not a problem today.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean like, I meant the focus is what I was saying. I'm not saying, no, don't worry.
It all has to be addressed, but...
The, the sign on seventy-five, they're seventy-five feet tall. Okay? And the ordinance that we passed is they need to be thirty feet apart. And when seventy-five fills up, if you, you know, like the Chicken Place, have a seventy-five-foot sign, to me, it's kind of ridiculous. And McKenney, Dallas, Plano, the tallest sign that you're going to see some signs there that are taller than forty feet, but there's been none put up the last fifteen years that are over forty feet. And...
How did chicken signs get so tall?
Just because our sign, our ordinance right now says that they can have a seventy-five-foot sign. And it says that those seventy-five-foot signs only have to be thirty feet apart. And, uh, the neighbors to our south, not us, but that we're going to be like in ten or fifteen years, say you can only have it forty feet. And you can only have it forty feet if you have a hundred and twenty-five foot of front. And so, that keeps...
No, I can, I, I can see you developing something like that, but we're not going to tell Chicken Place to lower their sign thirty-five.
No, no. No, what's there, is there.
Yeah.
If they ever have to replace it.
The whole thing, I totally agree with that.
If, if you ever have to replace it, then replace it, but, and, like, Blarah, they've got a seventy-five-foot pole sign, and then they have all their businesses listed down. Well, you could have a pylon sign, which they have on one twenty-one, that is probably forty feet tall, that has the price on it, that have all the businesses listed on it. But you can put that same sign on the seventy-five side, and, and some of that, you know, if we're going to always be ruled seventy-five foot to sit forever, forever and ever, it won't, but we're...
Well, you end up, you end up with that.
Yes.
And Jennifer was pointing out that Pizza Plus hasn't been here in
Yeah.
how many years?
Oh, God.
And that picture was taken yesterday?
Is it like fifteen years?
And that's, that's air pollution. I mean, that's right at the entry to our city again.
Right.
You know, is that what we want? I mean, they're all advertising the Highway Seventy-five is what they're doing. And it, it isn't necessarily reflective of who we want to be as a city. So, those are hard decisions. I would agree with John that having a substantial sign that, I think we have a couple of them in here, if I can find them. If I miss it.
You know, the, the sign that was a couple of slides back for...
Right there.
Okay? That's sign in the middle right there. There's nothing wrong, as long as they keep it up to date. If a business is no longer there, they should be a light there, or a welcome to Van Alstine thing put in its place.
Have, have, is there any consideration for...
Have, have, is there any consideration for, um, you know, some of the signs that you're talking about? Robert, uh, Van Alstine putting up its own, not structure like that, but its own really nice, uh, you know, the right material fits in line with Van Alstine sign that individual businesses can put their signs on, almost like a pole sign like you're talking about, where you can put them all down, and then like, an arrow that points to in-town, like that's where it's at.
You guys say it's kind of thing.
Yeah, but not, but like, really in line with how Van Alstine's downtown looks, but, you know, it could even match the sign in front of the road, it's in front of the Valero. But something that just says, you know, if, uh, El Patio wants to advertise, like they weren't, people don't know about patio, so they're going out sticking a little, you know, two-pronged sign in the ground, says El Patio, take a right right here. You already have a, a very nice constructed, well, you know, looked material, all that stuff on the front that says, El Patio, Mexican Restaurant, and it points an arrow to right, you know?
They would have to pay for that. Like you see on any other place you're going, there is that type of the.
And you could have for entering. Entering into downtown as well, you could have a, a, a sign that's in downtown that says, here's all the businesses that are in downtown, and people can see that, and now people don't have to put up all their little street signs all over the place that say, my business is over here.
So we, we do have in here, uh, kiosk signs that are, I, I've actually wrote in two different kinds, and that's for y'all to see that that is an option, um, for two different reasons. For, I've seen this in cities where you have kiosk signs that are similar to what you're talking about, that are going to direct people to city offices and parks, community centers, uh, that type of thing. And then there's also kiosks that will allow for pointing to different things in the city that, that you would like to point out, whether it's a new subdivision, to point someone to a new subdivision for purchasing a home, instead of having five builder signs out there. I mean, I, I think we could incorporate it if you want to lease it out to businesses. It's going to be quite an undertaking, but they would need to have a lease agreement in place to lease those spots. Um, and they would actually pay for the places on those spots, and we could assist with, with getting those lease agreements, too. I haven't seen it where you have actually, where cities have actually leased it out to businesses other than places that are for community-based, such as subdivisions, or, uh, community parks, or a community center, or a recreation center, something of that nature. But, um, the way that we have the kiosks written in here, we could do that.
The, the, the sign, builder signs still have up that when the builder, like Georgetown, like that's in these two of them, coming up five or down seventy-five, there's still the Georgetown signs up there.
They would have to be willing to pay for that, though, or else they wouldn't be on the, and they wouldn't be allowed to do abandoned signs either.
Right, and it would be maintained by the city, and they would have to sign a lease agreement to be on the sign.
A lot of faster, this, uh, cities have, where the only signs for real, or for developers that can be put up are there's the kiosk, and they'll say, Island Homes this way, uh, so-and-so's.
Yes.
Island Homes this way.
Well, and for me, my thought process around it was uniformly, like, we, we could take what it looks like, and it matches what our city looks like. And then second thought to it is, it, it makes it a real clear cut line. If you see any other sign by anything else that doesn't conform, but just to be like, no, that can't go there, it's done. And if you want to put, if you want to put this out, then you need to go to one of these, again, so it's called a kiosk area. You could go to one of these kiosk areas, and you have to put it on there.
I don't think you could allow individual businesses to put it on there, or someone end up looking like junk. I think it would have to be, you can make the city x amount, and they will insert.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it would be done, and my thought would be if the city comes, I mean, the business comes to the city, they give them a mandate, they pay for it, they do the lease agreement, and the city makes the sign, and then puts it on the.
We would probably be best to do it as an electronic sign, where we're not sticking anything of it, so they can program it from the water guess.
Otherwise, the cost would be massive to crosswalk that out anyway.
Yeah, I mean, however, me, I mean, that's just a thought process around getting rid of some of the signs that I was talking about, some of the other, you know, kind of nuisance signs, and then my, my thought process around it is, you know, material, location, and upkeep. Those are kind of my three, like, what are the materials that we're expecting for people, for new signs?
Another nuisance sign, we're going to, we're going to remove those, and feather flags and all this other stuff. But looking at El Patio, looking at some of these four-by-four signs that are well put-together signs. But sitting right off the curb like that, it's definitely in the right of way. So how we want to, how we're going to notify the people that their signs are not in the right of way?
Are not, or are in the right of way.
Or are in the right of way.
I think we would just have to send them a letter that shows a picture of their sign, and shows them the right of way through the area. Now, you know, the chances of us expanding Van Alstine Parkway are pretty slim, but even now, we're looking at a shared use path that will traverse Van Alstine Parkway, and some of these signs are in that right of way.
Correct, I mean, and we all, we all heard this story about, you know, Dallas Street to right of way is a whole lot wider than it is. So I know there's a lot of places where the right of way gets real close to buildings, and there may not be signage opportunities for them. So the signs can end up either piled aside, going straight up over the roof line, or attached to the building, so. So Lynn's going to have a job going back through and making sure that it's all around the way.
So I just have a question. Looking at that El Patio sign, and, and I've heard several people mention so far that there are businesses that put signs up on those four-by-four posts. Are we, are you okay, is council okay with that type of building material? Or do we want to be more specific about what they actually build that sign out of?
My thought process would be more, is more directional with what material they can use to do it. That's my opinion.
I think the area around downtown that we've already defined and have different codes, that we might have, like, like the El Patio sign doesn't look bad near downtown, but it would if it was along seventy-five, or.
Yeah, and you see that with two coming off the, off that hub in front of the road, it's right there. And you have a tomato sign that's been there for, since I've been here, and there's no tomatoes. And then, you know, the Armor Tech building has three of those El Patio signs right in front of their metal sign.
They're not done nicely either.
No, they're not.
They're just crap they threw together.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's so much the material as it is the. Is the, um, just how it's. The design, how it's constructed. I don't want to see too, too many of them out there, but, I mean.
And you can also eliminate that, that's kind of, we, what you're talking about, and not have people put signs in right of ways, you know, like, I mean, or, yeah.
Yeah, but their lung is huge.
Armor Tech, I took on personally a few months ago, and we're, we're down to one sign. The tire on the pole is gone, you might remember that? But it is, you know, a piece of plywood or pressed wood and vinyl letters stuck on it.
Well, and that could be part of the language, too, is if it is in downtown, historic part of downtown, or around downtown, then you can use, uh, you know, wood materials to make a sign, because that kind of act as what our downtown is. And kind of. But like outside of it, like Marla, your sign is fantastic, I love that sign. It's a good looking sign, but it's a metal sign, it's not two wooden states.
What she was told it created?
I know, but it's not two wooden states, it's put in the ground, you know, very morty, and I don't think that, you know, I'm just, in my head, I'm not seeing how that would compare to the sign that you already have, which is a fantastic sign, I think.
I'll go back to the Pizza Plus sign.
So can I, just, I'm sorry, were you? So the way that this is written in here now, just to give you an example of, technically, those are considered pylon, like the hell damage sign with the two posts, those are considered pylon signs. And the way that this is written in here, not, not in the current ordinance, but as an amendment, it's, the construction is required to be a minimum of twenty percent of the sign's structure width must be in contact with the ground. Poles and supports shall be concealed, and pylon signs shall be of similar color, material, and design as to be consistent with the architectural design of the primary structure. So basically, the way that's written is you can't have, you wouldn't be able to have, like, the, the sign that we're looking at a little while ago, with the two metal poles, two thin metal poles in the ground, it would have to be covered, and it would have to be consistent with the building. And this is just an example of what it could be to, to bring, to bring it into a certain type of architectural design requirement.
Pylon, poles can't look like poles, like poles have to be covered up.
Brick or something.
There's, I think, what you're stating, like Old Riley's sign, it's a red brick building, they've got a red brick.
That's actually considered a monument sign, because the entire base is covered. But like, is that Cooley Bay Winery? Like, that metal sign right there, well, for one, I bet that's an off-burned sign, I bet that's not in front of the winery, is it? Okay, so I don't know what the building looks like, but it.
Looks like that.
Kind of looks like that.
Well, then, maybe that would comply, but twenty-five percent of the sign width is not touching the ground, so, uh, it would need to have a more firm base written the way it is. Now, y'all, we, we could change this, where if that's okay, we can write it in where that's okay, but, um, if you. So you would have a more permanent sign frame.
Right. Instead of any metal pole, it would have to be.
Exactly, like that, you just pass one, um, if you could go the other way.
Other way?
One more.
Yes, one more. Well, or it went.
It takes all the housing partners, that doesn't have twenty percent, does it?
And it makes sense, but I mean, right now, they're holding over there, so they don't really matter, but I, that just kind of, back to Dr. Stacey's point, like, can't just claim that what's going on right now.
What about your public library?
I don't think that that would comply with it, with the way that it is here. I don't think that would comply. And, and again, like, I don't think that El Patio would comply.
In the, or, what's in the ordinance, ordinance currently, the Van Alstine library sign doesn't conform to that. Because it doesn't look anything like that.
Head your toe, is that a banner?
I don't think.
Yep, that's a banner, that's a banner.
The, earlier you asked me, earlier you asked me about signage that people, to put banners and distribute to their buildings, so the salon, head your toe, that's a banner? That's not a sign?
You sure? I thought that up at the top was a metal thing, and the banner hanging is a banner, but I thought the salon had the toe.
I think it's a banner, but.
I don't think that's a banner.
You got the idea.
Either way, I'm going to look at it, but I know what you mean.
So would that sign up there on the top, the red sign, would that have the twenty percent?
I mean, possibly, I don't know how large that sign is, and depending on the type of building, uh, I mean, that might, that may comply.
What would that be, the sign is, is that a pylon sign?
That's a pylon, the red sign is a pylon sign.
Well, like, pylon signs says the post can't look like post, but they have to be covered.
Does it say like that, or is it twenty percent?
Which one of the seven is it?
The poles or the supports?
The one that's not pylon.
She's saying it is a pylon.
Says poles and supports shall be concealed.
Yes. Now, remember, these are just suggestions. To give them ideas.
He did make up that definition, but.
Right.
Pylon. A pylon sign, the, the last sentence, a pylon sign in the definition says poles and supports shall be concealed.
Because the goal of that is to make the, the signs look more consistent with the building.
If you can.
For the aesthetic value of it.
In McKenna, all the car dealerships, if you look at their signs, they have, I don't know, six to eight foot wide signs, and then they have Nissan, Toyota, whatever, listed down, and it's all wrapped, and it looks like one, one unit, when you know there's two poles on each of them.
Well, the one thing you're talking about, the red with the white poles, wouldn't that fall under more compliance if there was a sign on this side saying the same thing? Because if you dig all the way down, then you'd be back to having a monument sign, not a, a pole. So you're going to have to have the pole to some extent, to some height, and then you're going to have the sign on the side, hiding the poles in between. To me, what makes that not fit is the fact you see the back end of the poles, should be dual sided.
When, you're not supposed to see the poles.
Yeah. Can you conceal it, can you conceal pylon signs with, um, uh, other materials besides, can you do like flat, you know, flowers, and, you know, whatever that might be to cover the whole?
Well, in McKenna, they're either metal, I think they're metal.
Metal, is it? It's a, it's a, it's a school for a wrap.
Yeah.
Like a school for a.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a school for a wrap.
Now.
This description of the tax.
Did the tax people get signed, sign permits when they put all that in? Or they just stick all that liquid stuff?
We didn't let, let them put a vape shop there, and the next thing you know, there you go.
I don't know who to use, I think that was.
But the answer is no.
Okay.
Are, is signage part of the permitting process? When, when somebody's asking for a CO or a building permit, is it part of the permitting process? Is there going to be a sign?
No, it'd be, yeah, separate.
Some of the, some of the tax companies, they're playing.
Just right there in the very beginning, what you're on, it's going to be.
Put it on the CO application, one of the questions you have to answer.
What is your intent?
So, and we'll back it up, and this takes me back to the Pizza Plus. By Pizza Plus had been there.
Do you miss that place?
What?
Yes.
I've never had it.
He's hungry.
They were corn pizzas. What about it?
Eighteen places now, used to pull out the pizza, and go or something.
It should have just been called Cheese Road.
It has to be called Cheese Road. So, but signage is expensive, especially on, on right of way, it's very expensive. So if the Asian cuisine place moves in, and the landlord does not require them to post their signage, or can they afford to post their signage up top, and just decide, okay, I'm going to put it on the storefront instead of up there, how do we, how do we get, how do we do that? How do we address that? That it becomes a landlord responsibility? Is it, okay, you're, you have storefront, and you're tied to the sign by CO, by, I don't know, because.
Are you talking about the sign that has multiple, with the Pizza Plus? It's already the owner's responsibility.
Correct, but he's not, he's, the owner, he landlord. And he didn't care about the signage, because he landlord, he going to put the lease up there. And it's a couple grand for a ladder truck to come out, get a guy up there, harness everything else, go up there, pull, pull Plexiglas out, chase light bulbs and everything else. And we, we, also, when you drive twenty out towards your cannon, you're going to see hundreds of signs with places that don't exist anymore. Why? Because it's expensive just to change it out, to put a light there. So he's not going to change it out until somebody's lease is fixed. He'll call, he'll call a marshal.
Or if it's time to the ordinance, they have to over a certain period of time, then. Or it's the ordinance, it has to over a certain period of time, then, I mean, you can leave it in there, but you just find them.
Yeah, thirty days to, not fifteen years.
And then, after new businesses, I think, what you're asking coming in, can't afford it or anything like that, and that's gotta be on the landlord and the new business to discuss, like, hey, you have, this is the ordinance, it's this way, so, uh, we have to negotiate on how you're gonna get that sign up there, and you don't have to put a sign up there, you can't go put one in the window, or hang a banner that says...
You can hang a banner, but you can put signage in the window inside, exterior.
Oh, well, whatever, Chris, an upfront, hang a banner as your only sign, it has to be negotiated between that new business owner and the landlord, and their contract of how they're gonna get a new sign up there, if they want sign up there.
Correct.
I think, if you just spell it, if you just spell it out in our ordinance, and then we make sure that we keep it up, keep up with it, then, I don't think you'll have a problem with that anymore, I think it'll be able to handle itself, or the landlord, not the business owner, will be fine, right? And the ones that own the building will be fine. And then, that'll force them to go to the business owner and go, let's get a sign up there, or, you know, hey, take this banner down, because this is not working good, or, hey, y'all left, I got thirty days to get this thing off, um, or, another fines coming.
Yeah.
I love to go to people and just...
You're not seeing it.
I still don't see it. I mean, I, I try and get, again, it's, it's that expensive, I mean, you, and, and retail center up there is sat vacant for, I mean, there's still vacant spots up there. So if you're gonna find a guy who's gonna say, I don't have anybody, as soon as somebody moves in, I'm even more happy to do it, but, I mean, uh, one-stop barber shops there, you get them signs, so. So how, how, if somebody moves out, they don't change the sign, how do you hold the next company responsible for that sign? You have to hold landlord. If you don't pay the fine, you'll put a lien on the property, guys, we do a ten percent bond around the lien, if you hold it for the next, fifty, sixty years, it didn't bother us, it didn't bother him, Pizza Plus stays up to twenty years.
He's probably on an appropriate seller, they should have, you have to pay that enough when he sells it.
I'm just gonna counsel this. How do you, how do you do it? That's, that's all I'm...
I think it's redundant, there's a fine per day, a fine per day at some point, doesn't it?
Uh, I'll need to check on that.
I saw some wording about that when I was reading through it, it was like, if they don't comply within this amount of time, they're fined, and then if they still don't comply, then they start getting fined per day, something like that.
Yes, that, yes, there, there is a fine in the citation, if they don't remove it within ten days, the way it's written now. Now, you, I mean, he could just receive a citation every single day.
Now, doesn't that, but also, doesn't that business area, that, that area have two signs?
What?
Go back, because Ben Luttrell has the anchor, Ben Luttrell has the anchor on the end, and he's got his big electronic sign, and you've got the sign with the Pizza Plus that used to carry the same area. So there's an anchor sign right there, that's got Texaco Medical and some of those stuff in that same, in that area.
Still has the...
Same guy owns that whole Wayne Street right here?
Now, go back to the Pizza Plus sign. Did you sit in the same, doesn't it, it, it holds the same area? It, we have two pylon signs that advertise for the same, one pylon sign, or we have a pole sign, a pylon sign, that advertise for the same area.
Yeah.
Put ones on the highway, ones on...
Which, which you can say, you have to have this many linear feet to put it on this side, and this many linear feet to put on this side.
It's the same business.
I would wanna know who owns each sign, because obviously, they have one benefit that's been in Latrell, do they own that sign separately, and they just construct it on their own, or does they own for the building, that whole retail strip, own both of them?
What, let me make sure I understand this, that subway sign and the Remax sign are the same, some, the same retail space?
No.
No.
The same area.
The Remax?
That's, the back sign in the...
The Remax and the...
Yeah, the, the Remax sign?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
They belong, they advertise the same shop.
I'm just sitting on this, is there any way to make it to where if you get fined on a daily basis to a certain point, or the city just automatically acts and goes and takes it down and simulates the bill?
Yes.
Then let's take the bill thing.
With, with, with...
If I go pay the fine, then I go pay the bill.
If it's in the ordinance, and you're not gonna pay the bill, then, at worst case scenario, I mean, worst, worst case scenario, then you have a chance to, to sue them for it.
Can, can you consider it, can you abandon?
Do what?
Property after, after, give it a sheet notice, um, and then given an opportunity to salvage their sign upon...
Way...
At some point, we're talking about, reconsider it, abandon a piece of property and pick it up and...
Yes, after the notification is sent to the property owner, he doesn't do anything within the ten days, then the city can remove it, but again, we're, you're back to the same thing, where the city has the costs, and you take civil action, um, issue the citations, and then go on from there.
A lot of these issues, like, I'm looking at McKinney's sign ordinance, it's no longer than our sign ordinance, in itself, about three quarters to issues that we're talking about tonight. And, for example, on billboards, it, it was marvelous saying, new billboards are prohibited, existing billboards shall be considered non-conforming signs, and shall comply with section, duh, 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 with the exception of billboards running seventy-five, which may be structurally altered or replaced, but shall not exceed a height of forty feet in an area of three hundred square feet, uh, height shall be measured, duh, duh, duh. So, if a billboard came down, you could put it back up, but we're not gonna make it more this high and, and this big.
It's fair.
Uh, and then, for the, uh, signs on walls, it, it's written in such a way, like, you can have one and a half square feet for each linear foot of wall, uh, and then, but it, uh, are twenty-five square feet whichever one is less. So if it's huge wall, you're still not gonna have it, hopefully, thirty percent. So, uh, anyway, I think we can lend this and solve the law.
I never believed in the creative will, just one point.
Yeah, yes. Does McKinney, do they have any, uh, special, uh, language or wording in their ordinance around signs in downtown compared to outside of downtown?
They have zones.
Okay.
And, they got business and agriculture zoning districts, all zoning districts, you do this, and then, but, yeah, McKinney has it, of course, they've got a famous downtown that, uh, that I don't know, I'm trying to see what it's called, I have a computer being swum in the results.
Most of their signs...
Non-business zoning districts.
Hold on, Dr. Spees, hold on.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Uh, most of the signs in McKinney, I used to work there, so, um, very far, the historical district, gentlemen, he works there, to print the signage that goes on the downtown, or downtown signs.
They have what they call McKinney Town Center.
We all have an historical signing person to be able to do that, but we do have a counselor or city keeper, but...
And, for moving signs, and when you do it, and how you do it, all of that is in their ordinance, and I imagine they have this, like, twenty years' allowance, well, two thousand twelve, they reworked, wrote this to solve the law.
How about if we print out a copy of McKinney's sign ordinance, get that to you all for comment and feedback, we can make some adaption to what we're proposing here, that it achieves to solve some of these problems, and then we schedule another time to get together, that, that work?
Sounds like great ideas.
I, I just, and that's great, um, some of McKinney's was incorporated into this, I did review McKinney's ordinance.
Sounds very similar.
Yeah, I did include some of McKinney's, uh, you know, I reviewed Frisco's, I reviewed South Lake, uh, areas that are gonna be similar for what Van Alstine would be looking at along that corridor as well, so. So if you, when you do review McKinney's, you might see, you know, some of that similar to what we have in this draft.
Is there any, while we're here tonight, is there any low-hanging fruit that we should be addressing by now? And for me, that nuisance signs, that's banners, um, you know, is there any items like that that we should be addressing immediately?
Yeah.
Obviously, the major signs.
And the nuisance signs, I don't know.
And the old signs that aren't advertising anything that's currently here.
Right now?
Seventy-five, we said the tomato.
Right now, our current ordinance says that you gotta have a permit, and it's five hundred dollars a day if you want a permit. So if the nuisance signs are in the way, I mean, we, they're just supposed to go down. Well, that's, that's, you know, that's good.
Well, we, we could, like, give a, a timeframe on that now, of like, hey, giving us time to go around and look at all these signs, but contact the owners, and then be like, hey, you've got fourteen days, or seven days, or whatever the difference is, or that's five hundred dollars, you know, they didn't have a permit to begin with, it's five hundred dollars fine.
You just have to be ready for what that's gonna do.
Right.
But that's fine.
But all the ones that are copped in the ground, that we buy ugly houses, and do this and do that, those things seem to go immediately, they shouldn't be there to begin with. These people are coster, people anyway, they're, they're not even in our town. I don't know if you have any pictures of those, but they are all along the highway there, they're on my side streets, I don't know if you guys have any out there, but they're, I'm sick of those things, they're everywhere, they put them up in the...
The nuisance signs you're talking about?
Yeah, the nuisance.
Yeah, there's some, there's, yeah.
This is on Van Alstine Parkway. That's just Van Alstine Parkway, and we have about every kind of sign there, I've got, the newest is that handwritten sign that's basically on a pallet.
Yeah.
Blocked up by Cinerblock.
What is that?
Probably a, uh...
Advertising taco's from the food truck.
Taco's, food truck.
Seriously?
Uh, so that one's gonna be...
Just go erase it, it's chocolate, right?
That, um, is, for next sign, is there any way that you could, and I get on myself opinion on this, put a workup in for, um, us creating a, kind of that digital sign you were talking about, that, you know, you could eliminate the sign for the railcar, I mean, for the, um, uh, the market, right? Because you could, we could post the market on there, you know, the Tuesday markets, you, you know...
They would have the face, well.
But, no, absolutely.
But I'm saying, his sign goes up and goes down that same day, though.
I know, but it, it looks horrible. In my opinion, it looks horrible, like, if you had a nice, what do you call it, what's a sign called?
Kiosk sign?
Kiosk sign, that was in line with, you know, how they often look, well, they wouldn't have to design it, they could just, every time they have a Tuesday, they're paying a lease to us to be able to put their railcar, you know, farmer's market up there, to point where it's gone. And I think there's enough events in town, there's enough things that are, maybe not a brick and mortar shop, but they can come in, you know, taco, the taco truck, or, you know, whatever it is, that are not, you know, permanent, they're kind of temporary, but they're here enough to where they're putting all these little signs out that just make it look really not appealing, and if we had something from a city standpoint that was designed really nice, it's in a good location, you know, and I get out on my own, this would be what it is or what it would look like, but if we had it, and then we were charging people to be able to put their business on there, put their event on there, and be able to advertise it that way, that might be a good way to eliminate some, because it's not gonna eliminate all, because...
And it'd also be a good place to maybe use some of your advertising overall.
Yeah, I mean, we could even put our own, yeah, absolutely, I mean, even there.
They could put their vehicles on the property.
What property?
The, where the taco place is and the...
That's all...
That's owned by the donation shop.
We're, we're working eventually to start a food truck ordinance to where we can maybe even help with some of that, you know, kind of, I'm not even doing that, but that, we do have that in the plan, and that's also gonna come too, with the new downtown part, because food trucks are gonna be down there too as well, so we'll have to have an ordinance in place to be able to regulate all food trucks in the city of Van Alstine.
I think part of what we as a city need to do is to go down Van Alstine Parkway as an example, and look at all these signs, like, Salon two oh three is not located where that sign is.
Where's that sign?
That's the Lakan sign, there's two of them, side by side, the red sign and the white sign, right?
Is that even a business still?
And I'm not sure what the red sign says.
I think the red sign is advertising the Georgetown subdivision.
Yeah, from when it was first coming.
Yeah.
And then, it's Salon two oh three used to be in that white house.
Uh-huh, that house on Dallas, it's gone now.
So, it, it may be an appropriate step for us to go through and look at, put our hands on each one of those signs, identify which one of those signs are actually permitted signs, which signs are not permitted signs, and then start addressing that problem right away to mitigate a lot of these things.
Questions whether or not...
Well, yeah.
Let me just ask you, that one is up with the Cinerblocks on the bottom, the plate, bright one or whatever?
Yeah.
That doesn't conform to our current ordinance right now, right?
It does not.
So, I mean, that's, I think, a good point, you're talking about the low-hanging fruit, like, let's start conforming to the ordinance we already have, and the permitting, if it's not there, it's not even located in the, the business, it's not even there anymore, like, let's notify somebody, give them a timeframe, and then, if they don't do it, like, get rid of it.
Are we still gonna make it their responsibility, because if we know who these owners of these signs are, it should be their responsibility to come and get rid of it? If they don't?
And come and get rid of it, if they don't by such and such time, then they can reverse suit for the cost of doing it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's the only way you get people to, to actually take action, is to, you define it, and then they don't care, and they don't do it, then you actually do it yourself, and then you hit them with a, you know, paid legal action possibility, and they either pay for it, or they're gonna spend a whole heck of a lot more money not paying for it to get it out of the ground.
I, I like your plan, Lou.
So, Katrina and Howard was talking, that Georgetown sign right there, that's probably my fault.
Nice. I asked him if it was when he was the builder.
Well, we'll deliver it to your house.
It was the last building for Lennar when Georgetown one finished up, and I was the last one to walk out. So, I'm probably, my boss probably told me to take that inside.
They, I thought it was twenty-one. You're right, you're fine, thanks, Lee.
Oh, I don't have the letter, but you're still driving it all.
They're on time, yes.
Five hundred dollars to pay for the last ten years there.
Well, I meant to ask a question, if you can't, if we can't identify, like, in your case, Lee, like, in your case, Lee, like, if we can't identify Lennar or whoever it is, do we have any ordinance right now, do we have the legal right to just rip it up out of the ground?
Would it become a property owner's responsibility, what's been there?
It's a pain in the...
It is, but...
Yeah.
So, I mean, they don't have that for sure, they don't know that's...
These are off-premise signs.
Yeah, so...
We also, we already have abandoned sign...
Yeah, I mean, I just think we just follow those, for what you're talking about, Miami, we just go from there, and like you said, we go to any of them.
That's gonna be difficult, but it's...
I think that would be a lot, just get rid of your abandoned signs and your nuisance signs, and you, you make a new choice.
Some of it is property that they didn't...
Yeah, just anybody you drive along, still, we can just take them up.
Put it there.
I know, probably five, five on my street that are just little cardboard signs, you can just stick them in the yard or give it a...
They show up everywhere, all the time.
But you know what, those things do cost money, so, like, we start picking them up and removing them, they're not gonna keep replacing them, they may do it once or twice, but they cost money, so, once you figure out that we're on it, that we're not allowing it anymore, whoever it is, they'll stop doing it, they're not gonna put them up.
I told somebody earlier, I was driving, I'm five, coming from Melissa, following a city truck pulling a trailer, and it was a Sunday, and they did pull... And it was a Sunday and they did pull over about every block and go to the corner and pull up the Highland Homes and the Bluefin Homes. And that trailer was that deep.
They're returning it back to the voters, so it's really.
Actually, they don't. Actually, because, because, no, because Anna, Plano, Frisco, your signs was only allowed to be out for seventy-two hours. So what they would do is they would, they would put those signs out every Monday. They would pick them up every Friday and then every Monday they would drive around and place and haul back in the exact same spot. Because they're considered temporary, they have a timeframe law. Those guys that drove around doing that, they had to.
And he's talking about city workers taking them up.
These were city workers picking them up. Oh, really? Okay. Well, yeah, there's guys out there that don't. And they were four feet deep in that trailer. Oh, yeah.
So they just toss them?
But we have to do the same thing. And you look at the entry into our city. They're handwritten, you know, the, we'll buy your house no matter what condition.
Lab puppies.
And the builder's sign went on top of each other everywhere. That is an.
They're everywhere. Now hiring, whatever. I understand it's hard to hire in the city.
I guess I need to cancel.
But it sure is ugling up our city as we go through, so I just, we'll need careful support when we start pulling these things out of the ground that, you know, they're gonna line up on two cities.
Is that the kind of support you're talking about?
There's one up there in particular that, you know, when we go take it out, it's.
It's gonna be fun?
Yeah, it's gonna be fun. And we're not attempting to impede their business. We have kind of a bigger picture.
Yeah, it's not about each individual, it's about.
Well, you think about it, ten years ago, right? Like, that's, that was the way that people knew where anything was around here. And you didn't have the volume and people that ran through the, it feels like we're talking to each other, I mean, you gotta pay for what's gonna be ten years from now and you have to do it.
Because once it does, they come in.
The sign that's next to the Pettit sign, that little metal frame, it's a driving school sign. It's been here ever since I've been in Van Alstine. But it's, it's a nuisance sign. I mean, it's made out of metal. But it's, it's one that gotta come out of the ground, you know, just, and I hate to do it. I mean, I understand that, but.
Um, one more question.
What about the Green Acres? Because they advertise, they're advertising sales and things and that's a nicely kept sign. Is that allowed? And how we are now as far as, with it reworded?
The Green Acres sign? Yes, that, on her, on her PowerPoint, that was a permissible sign for a brief period of time.
That's a marquee sign.
And that's not in the right way?
Yeah, it's, it's probably the location is not legal, but the sign itself.
The sign itself is okay.
Now, I think there are a bunch of these signs yanked up. When you go to, you come across people like coaches driving school, they don't run here around. You have a sign probably sitting out there because you forgot to put it up against that house. Because usually takes it out, puts it up against the house and then it's ready to start over. You then comes out and sets it back out.
In his own yard?
No, that's, that's his classroom.
That's in front of his.
That sign hasn't moved in a year. I know it has. Yeah, I know it has. But it may be just some symbols of call ahead and move the sign back out of the way. All right, so we'll put our hands on all the signs, look for ones that are permitted or not. Which ones are in right of way that we need to start notifying people that they're in right of way. And then we'll take the McKinney sign ordinance and print it out and get it to you electronically so you can look through it for comment. Get your comments back when you get it.
We just, we need to get it in our, just two seconds.
Is the current ordinance around broken signs, what's that?
What is it, broken signs?
Broken signs.
It says, the, the, the way that you review, yeah, the current ordinance gives you the authority, anything that's not permitting right now, you can, you can address, and nuisance signs you can address easily through our current ordinance without a problem. Well, just, this is a full-time job for code enforcement. Absolutely. And it's only. I've got the drums and I've got the harmonica, but this is a tough one. I mean, we'll have to assign somebody to this. And it's gonna have a bunch of people off? Yeah. Because again, like I said.
That was a wonderful list for your board.
Again, signage is not cheap. It's not cheap and you're putting your livelihood and your advertising to bring customers to your business to make money. You're, it's an outlet of cash and hopeings to make more money. And now somebody's coming home, you know, they can sign up, but, oh.
Well, there you go. Before you do that, like you say, you go around and look where the signs are and send notifications to those companies that are still around saying, this is not, you know, according to ordinance, this needs to be removed. And you have this one removed. If you don't, then you have to, you know, certainly hire somebody to remove it. I mean, that's.
Or just have a friendly conversation.
The current, the current sign ordinance?
Can I take down the tomato sign?
Yeah, that's on.
I'll take it.
It's on, yeah. The sign's still.
No, that's not the same. Can I take a slush hammer out there?
Yeah, go ahead, have that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I saw the tomato sign.
Yeah.
Uh, on the current sign ordinance, for nonconforming signs, to remove them, it says for signs costing less than a hundred, they must be removed within sixty days of written notice. And signs costing more than a hundred, but less than five hundred to be removed within a hundred and eighty days of written notice. And if they're over five hundred, they have a year to remove the sign.
That's too long.
Oh, it's way too long.
Let's just change that.
Let's change it to thirty, sixty, no.
I think that's too long. Fifteen, thirty, forty-five.
Some of these small businesses load.
That's a lot of money, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe a substantial amount of money.
I'm, I'm okay with the dollar amount or whatever, when I'm here, but the timeframe is, depending on the size of the sign we're talking about, these little.
Removing a sign that this goes back to the pizza plus sign, that would fall to the pizza plus sign. If it's damaged or disrepair, then they need, then it needs to come down immediately. If, if it's in the right of way and they're gonna have to move the sign that they've already erected, it's not a matter of, okay, we're gonna charge you five hundred dollars. I mean, they built it there in good faith and now they're gonna have to move it someplace else. There, there's gonna have to be a little bit of a reverse period of someone.
I'm not talking about those. I think what I was referring to was the little picket signs that are everywhere. That's what I was talking about. The other signs, those are different.
Those would all be under a hundred bucks, so.
Yeah, but that's sixty days. Like, that should be fifteen days. Like, that shouldn't be sixty days.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's a simple part of the ground sign, then, well, you have a lot of time to do that, whether it's spent, it's metal printed.
I would, if they're.
Was it there?
About like, for the drivers' bill, they're gonna have to get a one, design. No, but that's what she just said, but if they don't have a permit, it's sixty, ninety.
Especially removal of something.
But they can only leave them for a few days.
Nonconforming signs.
Now you're saying, okay, if they have a permit, they have sixty days.
They're nonconforming.
Removal nonconforming sign. That's a, that's a nonconforming sign. So if it's built.
Right, but if the, the timber.
Yeah, right, right.
But the timber is not different, right?
They're nonconforming.
Be, uh, be, not that, the.
So that would be on the sixty, ninety, whatever.
So they're setting for this guy, follow up, right?
Well, you don't even do that. If you don't wanna do it.
It's different.
It's only good if they, if they have to counsel about it, we need to make sure that you don't do it legally so we can make sure that we just call back on what's in our ordinance. So that, but, I mean, if it is a sign that we're talking about, you know, that.
All these.
Yellow with pink sign, if they have to, we have to give them sixty days to remove, remove it, then it's gonna stay there for sixty days. And then, I mean, that's, that's not.
A non, a nonconforming sign would be a sign that conforms to the code at one time, but no longer does. A prohibited sign would have never been a conforming sign.
Sure.
So that can be removed at any time.
Or a nonconforming sign could be a sign that necessarily, that didn't necessarily conform. Maybe it was installed and was never permitted. Like, maybe it is a type of sign that is allowed, but it wasn't permitted.
So that, that's.
That would be an illegal sign.
But it's all nonconforming?
Yes.
So that's.
Nonconforming would, I would say, would be permitted at one time and didn't conform to the permitting process.
Right.
Where an illegal sign would be, any illegal side or.
You never have permission to begin with.
Yeah, but is that how it's written in our ordinance?
Right.
I don't think it's followed up. I don't think it's.
That's where, nonconforming, if we start removing our signs and they come back.
They're not performed.
I get sixty days to remove my sign. Nonconforming in our ordinance is forbidden.
But it's in the, right.
So Smokey G's.
Yeah, nothing about Smokey G's. So Smokey G's sign was probably, Lee, tell me, can you think about this?
There's, there's not a designation for nonconforming.
Right, and there's nothing, there's either prohibited or there's nonconforming, or then there's legally existing in the current one. So if it's not, if it's.
If it's prohibited by Smokey G's, you're guaranteed not.
A permit, yeah.
And it doesn't match anything, so that's a prohibited sign.
And the business is no longer there.
And the business is no longer there. So even for, what was it? When ownership or leasehold interest in a site changes, that information shall be provided to the building inspector by the former or leaseholder. Interest will do thirty days to change. So that's a prohibited sign, not a nonconforming sign.
But it's thirty days for a prohibited sign?
No, it's thirty days once ownership changes.
But that's not, we're going to, it's not a prohibited sign.
Yes, prohibited sign, it needs to be done. They're not.
But all, and I agree, but all I'm asking is there a timeframe on that?
No, not a prohibited sign, just a nonconforming.
I think you need to have your definitions in your ordinance to enforce it.
Yes.
Uh, that would be the new ordinance enforcing the current ordinance, you would, you have to enforce all that.
And that's what I'm saying, it's not written in the current ordinance, are we gonna put ourselves, you know?
So.
They're gonna have a new ordinance by the time you get low, low hanging fruit type period.
Yeah.
So it does say here, under generally prohibited, signs not addressed by this chapter are prohibited. So that covers that. Yeah, so, um.
But if it's prohibited.
And if there's no timeframe.
What do we do with it?
Take it out?
There is removal guidelines in here.
So they ask for it within seven days, but they're back to the law.
Written notification.
To put it in his yard?
Notification shall state that if the sign is not removed within twenty-four hours after expiration of grace period, a citation may be issued and the city may resort to civil remedy. So it doesn't say the, what the grace period is, so that could be designated within the notice.
Civil remedies against him. If he's gone.
He's there, he's still liable for this.
But Gary, he could be gone and he's tuning up his barbecue and be back next week. Because we don't have a food truck ordinance in this town. So he could be back next week and I still have another sign.
But you get, but technically with how that's written is you can take that, whether he comes back or not, even without a food truck ordinance, that sign can still go. A sign can still go. If he tries to turn that sign up, then it's the same thing, it's a prohibited sign.
Then that falls in the same category as a pallet sign, right?
Yeah, even if he comes back, you can say, hey, a pallet sign, you know, pallet sign being held by, held up by cinder blocks, that's not anchored properly, becomes a danger or it falls under the danger, if you get blown around, if you come loose, it could fall over and hit somebody, whatever. Then it becomes a danger and you need that. But if that's an abandoned sign, he's gone, we don't worry about it. Does the landlord, is he at jeopardy because of that sign? Yes.
Yes.
He would be, yes.
Yeah, whether, if we rip it up and then we don't hear anything from him, then, and it didn't cost us any money to rip it up, except for, you know, thirty minutes of time or whatever it was, then obviously you're not gonna bill him.
But it does say abandoned sign has to be abandoned for six months, continuous month. Well, he hasn't been up in a, in a.
But like, to remove, to remove the solid sign, like, that would cost money. That would be a lot of money to remove that sign. And you would need to contact whoever owns that building and say, buddy, you gotta take that sign down or at least change it to whatever the, the, yeah, route, whatever the restaurant is currently right now and then revamp it a little bit, make it, you know, nicer colors and all that stuff. And if you don't, it goes away. And then if they don't wanna pay for it, you bill them and then you get a fine and take action on it.
I'm just like, if you might have landlord responsible actions of a general, from a landlord, I don't know.
Well, and that's what I'm thinking, please say the landlord intent on the ordinance has to be hit that for him, because that's in place. Because if they don't.
But if they don't, and you get a new city, that's, that's when the discussion would have to happen.
Yeah.
That's a good point, to make sure the wording is specified, that you can't just leave it on a monument.
It's always.
This is like the one with the pizza plus.
So if I rent out a house with somebody and, you know, they.
Cause you could just blank it all out and.
It's still there, it's not proper. Until somebody's. When they're gone, it's still not proper.
Who bought the pizza plus?
Whoever owns that, that retail center, they search for.
Joel Field.
What?
I don't know if he owns it, but the, the guy who manages the leasing is, his name is Joel Field.
We don't, well, we can, we can ask him, what's the, what's the name of that place? Like the building is the most, yeah.
Taxual problem you need to.
Yep.
But if that's how our current ordinance is right now, I mean, that should be pretty easy to go around and see, you know, is this business in existence? Has it put a sign in the yard? Has it been permitted?
Right, but it all, but, but here it comes down to cash. It, it comes down to cash. When a tenant moves out, he doesn't have, he didn't, he's going out of business, but he doesn't have any money. He's not gonna change the sign. So the landlord, the landlord's not gonna change the sign because he's lost the tenant, so he's not gonna pay for it. And doing, and doing all this.
Yeah, and he would have, it's still his property, his ownership, it's super company, what happens on that, so we would just have to ride over it. So that's very crazy.
And it's, and it's written that way now, but again, it goes down to, we don't have the code enforcement.
To change that.
I would just say, basically, we already have a lot of this covered, it's just not being.
We don't have the code enforcement to do it. Well, it, it may prompt that action a little bit quicker. If I just know a group of people that have to come and ask, but. Okay, I just, I was telling Jennifer, I just wanna be comfortable when I pull that sign, a left-hand side in the middle, that I'm not immediately.
What are we talking about?
The one there that says Bible study?
The middle one, left side.
It's a nuisance sign. That I'm not immediately labeled an atheist, because I'm not.
You know, that purple.
But that is, that's a nuisance sign that's been placed there and it, with all good intentions, but.
I think it's gonna take discussions, go out to the church, go into the church and just say, hey, you know, we're about to crack down on this. Can y'all take care of that part of it?
Yes, I mean, especially with churches, it's.
Well, when I say hi, I'm not pulling that sign out of the ground, but we're gonna have to address those kinds of things.
My church, that's my church, uh huh. My church, you got that.
What church is it? Is it, what church is it? Spence. Spence has a sign on Highway five. It's two poles, but it's not all the way property.
You said that one's not permitted?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Is that Catholic or is it?
I think it's Greenwood Heights. It's Greenwood Heights, it's all over the end.
But I, I, again, I think it's pretty easy for you to determine if it's, who the business is and since somebody just say, hey, listen, this is what's happening. This is a nuisance sign, we're taking these down, you know, would you mind taking it down for us? And if they don't, then.
So give it, give it a time.
They know that the prettiest side, sign on this slide, which is that one, the electronic sign in the middle, is not permitted.
Seriously?
That's new.
Well, guess what? They're gonna have to get one now.
Which one? The.
Methodist church, isn't that the Methodist church?
Yeah, they had the new message board, the electronic message board.
I like it, it looks nice, but.
It's a beautiful sign, it's not permitted, though, they're just.
Well, wait, then there's something here, the middle.
The middle, bottom.
The bricks.
The one with the.
The one with the feather sign in front.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, I actually can't, the feather sign.
That one. So we'll check for who's permitted and then we'll have to say, come on in, we're gonna have to make sure it's compliant, you're gonna have to get your permit. And that's gonna create a little bit of a stir, but that's what we need to do to get us consistent across the board.
I'm worried about the ones that are currently not permitted but in compliance. Seems like you've got a lot to worry about.
Like, try to tie all the crap.
I, I would, I wouldn't go at the, I mean, that's not low hanging fruit, because that's, that's gonna have to be revisited for like, when we actually adopt the ordinance. Then you can look at that one and say, does it fit in any ordinance and kind of go through that.
You'll fix. Yeah, it's been there for.
It only fits, it hasn't been there for, I mean, I mean, no problems we have in town.
A few.
I mean, because if the churches are not problematic, just, if we get the permit by way of them being, if they're compliant, and move up on the road.
Well, it's gonna be an issue, and you look, we've got every conceivable type of sign for our churches. All, all put up by well-intentioned people, you know, but it's gonna be a challenge.
The, the new language and the new ordinance where the sign needs to conform to the building type will help with some of that too. And we can look at that when we got this.
All right, thank you.
So, if I can put, what lane told us, would you restate what we're gonna do?
Say it again?
You're gonna have McKinney ordinance sent to us?
We'll pull that up, get it out to all of you electronically. Appreciate feedback that I can share with Heather, make some changes to what we're proposing to y'all, and probably put this next meeting off till January.
Can we put something together in that, what you sent us, that has a breakdown of costs and fees that currently we have, and what we're saying we wanted to, or, you know, the ideas or whatever for it to be, because that is one part that I have a lot of questions about as well.
Okay, so add a fee schedule to the sign ordinance?
Add a fee schedule to us and everything, so we can have it right there, we don't have to go search for it.
And we will go around and...
And have a list of the ones that do have...
We'll go around and handle as many signs as we can, find out if they're permitted or not permitted. We'll capture a picture, so we can say, these are the signs that are not permitted, here's what they are, and then we'll check signs in right of ways.
And I was gonna add a list, but y'all's homework seems like it's getting really long, so... Um, what I was gonna add, when I sent that to Lane, to send to y'all is a list of things that you specifically need to look at regarding regulations, so you can have input on them when we get back in January to, so some final decisions could be made on those regulations, so maybe we could pinpoint those specifically.
Will we just match them up, like, with what the current ordinance is and what you're proposing, like, side by side?
That's what you do.
Yeah, that's the easiest way to do it, because instead of having to go back to what the current ordinance is and how to read it, you just match them up side by side.
They see a strikeout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Strikeout.
What, how?
Well, there's such a difference between the format, between the two, I tried that, and it...
I tried that at my boss's, too.
Just got way too confusing.
Side by side.
Yeah, okay.
It's the easiest thing to do, to read it here, and go, this is what we're changing, and you can see the differences, read the differences, and understand them.
Okay.
Perfect.
There's no objection, we'll stay in turn.